Good evening, this is City of Pleasantville City Council Board Meeting. Today's date is March 20th, 2023, time at 6:30 PM. This meeting has been duly advertised in the city's newspaper on the news at, uh, otherwise known as Sunshine Law. Rocco?
David Porter.
Present.
Dambler.
Here.
Thomas.
Present.
Alona.
Present.
Korea. Parcay.
Present.
Sistral.
Present.
Six and Fifty.
I have to say, uh, questions will prove previous minutes. Don't forget. Second. On favor?
Aye.
Let's have it. She's very busy today, huh?
Very, very, yes.
Do you have the commendations?
Okay. You know, we're gonna be back. Can I have Cynthia Dowdy come on? Good evening, everyone. This is the commendation for Cynthia Dowdy. City of Pleasantville, Office of the Mayor, Certificate of Commendation. Whereas Cynthia Dowdy's career trajectory for the City of Pleasantville began in 1997 as the mayor's administrative aide to the former Ralph Peterson Senior responsible for organizing various annual city events such as the Flag Day, tree lighting ceremony, multicultural festival, and the National Day of Prayer ceremonies. And whereas Cynthia Dowdy's administrative duties also consisted of her successfully completing the requirements for equal opportunity employment, studies, and certificate programs, affording Cynthia the opportunity to serve in the capacity of a permanent action officer for the City of Pleasantville. And whereas Cynthia in April 20, excuse me, 2000, Cynthia Dowdy was prompted, was promoted to position of Deputy Court Administrator for the City of Pleasantville. Soon thereafter, successfully completing her written examination segment of Phase One, Two, and Three process for municipal court administration certification programs, submitting her municipal project court improvement project on the subject of truancy alternative program. And whereas in February 2002, Cynthia Dowdy was declared by the Supreme Court of New Jersey to be a certified municipal court administrator, CMCA, therefore serving in a provisional role until advancing the court administrator for the City of Pleasantville in the year 2010. Whereas Cynthia Dowdy's commitment and dedication to the City of Pleasantville extends beyond her vocation, she has been instrumental in implementation of the Pleasantville Ambition Pride and Prosperity, our PEP committee, spearheading scholarship initiatives for the youth of Pleasantville, civic engagement, organizer of the city's annual mural contest, wellness initiatives, and the city's winter wonderland ceremony. Cynthia's greatest love is her son Aaron, and upon retirement desires to spend more time traveling and photography. And now therefore I, Judy M. Ward, the mayor of Pleasantville, New Jersey, on behalf of City Council, this administration, and the citizens of Pleasantville, to commend Cynthia Dowdy for 25 years of service, public service, and do pray for a healthy and rewarding retirement. In witness whereof, I have set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Pleasantville to be affixed this 20th day of March in the year of our Lord 2023. Signed Judy M. Ward, Mayor. So you see, not only is Cynthia our court administrator, we're gonna miss our son so much, and all that she's doing and has done that we're just gonna miss. I have, I mean, even before I was on council, Cynthia was here and I was working with the multicultural festival, and she just, she's just so busy. She, she loves being involved, and she said she's gonna stay involved when she's done. Cynthia, thank you for everything.
Just really, it has been a blessing to serve in Pleasantville. My parents brought a home here in 1960, and you know, Pleasantville has always been my heart, and I just pray that God will put the right people in the right places and that we will continue to build our community and build it in a way that I remember. So I'd just like to say thank you, uh, to everyone, and I'm looking forward to just doing what I love to do, and I love to travel, so I have my agenda.
Cynthia, congratulations on your retirement and happy travels.
Thank you.
Congratulations Cynthia. I don't mean... But it seems like you've always been here, you've been the one constant through everything. I hope you enjoy your retirement, tell your son hello, and enjoy yourself.
And he's planning on getting married in May.
And Mrs. Dowdy, I just wanna thank you for all that you've done, and want you to enjoy your time and, uh, you know, enjoy your travels and the rest of your life.
Certainly, thank you so much.
Be very welcome.
Cynthia, God bless you and congratulations, enjoy your retirement.
Cynthia, from right, my coolies, I've said that you're a good person. Thank you for your service and that God bless you.
Yeah, Cynthia, um, I don't think, most people understand, um, or know, uh, I think she put in her, her retirement papers at least three or four times. That's, that's how much she really, really cares about the city, and she was so dedicated to, she took into consideration, um, you know, the, the situation that the city was in as we looked to fill her spot. Uh, but finally it came to the point in time when we said Cynthia, look out for you, and I'm glad to see that you have done that, uh, because it's always, and I say this with every retirement, but because I really truly mean it, that when you move on to this next phase of your life, when you're healthy enough to do so, so that you can enjoy it, this is what we wanna see. So job well done, and, uh, I will see you around, congratulations.
Cynthia, congratulations on your retirement, I hope you're traveling well, take a lot of nice shots and nice pictures, and I hope that the City of Pleasantville will be able to afford, uh, have an employee just like you replace you, and be, so they'll be able to do the same things. Thank you, and God, Godspeed.
Okay. Okay. Kalpani Bazemore?
Yeah. Yep.
Come on over here.
She's got a term.
You wanna move here, right?
Perfect. This perfect place.
I feel like I'm seeing double when I see you. The other brother. Okay. Oath of office, State of New Jersey, County of Atlantic. I.
Kalpani Bazemore.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New Jersey.
Of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And the government's established.
And the government's established.
In the United States.
And the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And partially.
And partially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of.
All the duties of the office of police officers.
For the City of Pleasantville.
For the City of Pleasantville.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
This for photo proof.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, we'll do that in the end.
Okay. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Um, I would just like to thank you, Mayor, and Council for this wonderful opportunity I've allowed to protect and serve this community every day, show up for the great work activity, all this true professionalism and integrity. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I need all of them here.
Want to just at the end?
Yeah.
Okay, that'd be more simple. Okay. Next, we have Franklin Alberta. Left hand on the pipe on the table. This is the oath of office for Franklin Alberta. State of New Jersey, County of Atlantic. I.
I Franklin Alberta.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New Jersey.
Of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will, that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And the government's established in the United States.
And the government's established in the United States.
And this, and this state.
And this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And partially.
And partially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of the office.
All the duties of the office.
Police officer for the City of Pleasantville.
Police officer for the City of Pleasantville.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
No, no, that was Jessica. He's good.
Yes. I would, um, thank you, Mayor, thank you for the council, um, thank you for this opportunity. Also, I wanna thank, uh, my friends and family that came today to support me. Thank you, you won't be disappointed.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Jeffrey Barris.
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 That's a B. Morris.
Barris.
This is the oath of office for Jeffrey Barris. State of New Jersey, County of Atlantic. I.
I Jeffrey Barris.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New Jersey.
Of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And the government's established.
And the government's established.
And the United States.
And the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And partially.
And partially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of the office.
All the duties of the office.
Police officer for the City of Pleasantville.
Police officer for the City of Pleasantville.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
My fellow colleagues, I'd like to thank you, thank the council, thank you for all the fam- family and friends that are already here to support me today. I would say this has my career, I would just like to thank everybody.
Thank you, God bless you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the next was Musa Awai. Okay. Oath of office for Musa Awai. State of New Jersey, County of Atlantic. I.
Musa Awai.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New Jersey.
Of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And the government's established.
And the government's established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And partially.
And partially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of office of, all the duties of office of police officer.
All the duties of office of police officer.
For the City of Pleasantville.
For the City of Pleasantville.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
I, um, just wanted to start off by thanking God that I'm here today. Um, I wanna thank you, Mayor, um, I wanna thank the City Council and the Police Department as a whole for this opportunity and all the love and support from my friends and family here today.
Okay. Last but not least, we have Jonathan Dodson. Okay, this is the oath of office for Jonathan Dodson. State of New Jersey, County of Atlantic. I.
Jonathan Dodson.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the, of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New Jersey.
Of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And I'll be a true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And the government's established.
And the government's established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And partially.
And partially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties of.
Perform all the duties of.
Police officer for the City of Pleasantville.
Police officer for the City of Pleasantville.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
I would really like to thank the mayor so much. Um, thank you to everybody in the council, thank you so much for this opportunity, thank you to the chief, thank you to everybody else that's in the police force. Cannot wait to get more involved in this beautiful community, um, you know, uh, we thank you so much, and I definitely won't let you down, and thank you everybody that's here, thank you.
I would like to say for all the officers, excuse me, what's that?
No, go ahead, Mayor. Go. Real quick, everyone, thank you for coming out and supporting all the new officers tonight. They worked really hard to get here, it's, it's a challenge that with all the rules that have changed now with the state, these guys, they're gonna be working very hard in the academy, they're gonna need your support at home, they're gonna come home complaining, sore, tired, frustrated, all the above, so they're gonna, they're gonna need the support from their family the most. Council, thank you for allowing this to happen for me, uh, I need officers all the time, so, um, but yes, these, these guys are gonna need your support, and I thank you.
I'd like to say thank you to all the officers that we have tonight that I swore in tonight, it was my pleasure, and you really don't know how much of a pleasure, because I'm hearing it from the chief every day how bad that we need you, so we welcome you, ask you that you be safe on the streets, and the same thing that I say to all of the officers and law enforcement that comes in, to just treat our residents the way you would wanna be treated. God bless you, be safe, and to the families, thank you all. I know this is stressful for the families as it is for them being out on the street all the time, so I do say to you, you're in our prayers, and thank you.
To all of you, welcome to the family. I want everybody, please, stay safe.
Congratulations and good luck for you guys, stay safe. I just realized, Mr. Dodson, that it was you I saw in the gym with Stacy, am I correct?
Yes, sir.
And the other two. You guys stay at it, man, good luck. Congratulations to all the officers, to all the officers, welcome aboard, stay safe, God bless you.
Thank you to all the officers, and thank you to chief for always giving out those officers and we have here to support you, boy. Thank you and good luck to everyone.
Yeah, you have Captain Slatter training you, we know you're active. So, um, it truly is a family, we have a brother that's joining the team, we have someone who's been a longtime employee, whose son has made it to the force, so you are in a circle of family, so welcome and please, please stay safe as we pray, uh, pray for your safety, God bless you and congratulations.
Bless all of our incoming officers, who's the Bazemore, Franklin, Jeffrey, Musa, and Jonathan. God bless you, be safe out here on the streets, uh, you doing the office, I don't know what you ate growing up, but the last time I seen you, you're not a little guy anymore, so, you be able to take care of the streets. Um, God bless you and, and God bless the City of Pleasantville, thank you.
Guys, come on up. Turn on this side, turn on this side.
How are you?
I'm good, I can do.
Good.
Okay, first on the agenda is ordinance number two, second reading, public hearing will be held during a regular session, amend chapter 116 and chapter 300 of the city code regulating the operation of cannabis businesses in the city.
Any questions?
Order number three, second reading, public hearing will be held during a regular session, amend chapter 300 of the city code regulating the operation of cannabis businesses in the city.
Any questions?
Order number four, first reading, authorizing a special emergency appropriation pursuant to NJSA 40 code and 4-53 for the purpose of funding severance liabilities due under existing performing contracts and authorizing the issuance of special emergency notes to fund the same. Affirm, please, that's the mission.
As we discussed at the special council meeting, uh, there's four, funding of retirements of, now I believe it's nine firefighters, four, five, four fire policemen, as well as our court administrator, our seven, he may. These are, um, based on contracts that we don't have the funds to pay for them, uh, and we have to, if we bring forth that notice, they'll be paid over five years, starting to 2024. Total amount is over nearly 2.5 million dollars.
Are there any consequences if we vote this down tonight? What are the consequences if you, uh?
Probably have to lay out 30 people. And that's just, that's a testament, we were probably, depending on what department they were in, uh, public service, mayor, uh, first responders, average salary's probably about $75,000 a year, um, police probably a little bit, plus or minus some, uh, public works is probably $40,000, so it depends on where we're taking, taking the people from, you would lose services to the city beyond, either have no public works, and some firemen would go, and some policemen would go, or 50/50, police fired, but you wouldn't be able to maintain the city either for fire prevention, uh, police, policing, or repairing the road, and normal things that public works does for us.
So we know this is gonna add to our debt, and this is gonna be paid off, you said in five years?
Five years. It's a short term note, it doesn't, uh, doesn't impact quote-unquote our borrowing capacity for, for bonding, uh, in the future, this is acceptable ending. And, uh, the state, we had, we'd looked at some other ways to fund, in the sheer, and per our, our, this is the way the state would want you to do it, rather than go to, we talked before about transitional aid, this is an avid question altogether, um, he said if we had this problem, went five forward naturally, he looked at it, he was saying, we're not getting transitional aids, you have to do this. We have to borrow the money, otherwise, as you mentioned, there's the consequences of losing people, cutting heads.
Excuse me, please, are there any other alternatives besides this route?
Okay.
Is there any other alternative besides this route?
Uh, imagine, three people would have to go, there's no other alternative.
Okay, that's all.
Any questions? Counsel?
Resolution 57, authorizing assignment of your schooling certificate to Swan Superior Properties LLC.
Any questions?
Resolution 58, authorizing the tax collector to refund taxes on certain properties. Resolution 59, cancel tax sale certificate number 22-00458, block 370, block 40. Resolution 60, urge the board of county commissioners for Atlantic County to review the ACUA operations, the efforts taken by the ACUA to reduce costs, and the ACUA's efforts to address long-term solid waste disposal for Atlantic County.
Any questions?
Certainly. Mayor Ward received from the Atlantic County Mayor's Association, a resolution that was passed at that level, sent out to all of the municipalities in Atlantic County, uh,
Urging the municipalities to support their resolution to the Atlantic County Commissioners, for the Atlantic County Commissioners to have some type of input or review regarding the ACUA's efforts, as it states, to reduce costs and to address long-term solid waste disposal. So, Pleasantville would not be a participant, to my understanding, as to the language of the resolution. It's not ours to participate in the review process, it's supporting the Atlantic, the Atlantic Mayor's Association, Atlantic County Mayor's Association, to urge the Atlantic County Commissioners to have a review in the ACUA's process.
Question. To ensure transparency and oversight, as stated in the resolution, I would like that resolution to be read out loud tonight in public in this chamber, in that spirit of oversight and transparency.
And we, as a city, would have, you said we would have no say in the review? Mr. Speaker, I'm sorry.
The, the language, the language within the support document is simply requesting municipalities to support the Atlantic County Mayor's Association's resolution, asking for the Atlantic County Commissioners to have a review of process openings. That's the, that's the request of the resolution.
I have a question, and I guess this is for the mayor. I'm sorry, Mr. Speaker. So, I guess this question is for the mayor. Can't they just request for this on their own? Why are they asking for other municipalities to, I guess, come up with this regulation?
Because they're other municipalities that use, they all use ACUA.
But they're the county, so they can just ask for review on their own without the other municipalities?
Well, it's just that they, you know, for unity and for everyone to have a say in it. But what if they come up with something that you, a bunch of us, don't agree with?
But we don't have a say, correct?
But, I mean, once they do the review, let's see where, you know, at least know what their, what their findings are. You know, that there's something that we could dispute, we would dispute that. But if every municipality doesn't have its say in it, you know, then you have an argument.
Does this have something to do with the transfer station?
No.
I do have a question for you, Mayor. Being that it is the Mayor's Association, which I just, did you have input on this itself?
Well, John, you went to the first meeting, I think, when they were first discussing it. But the meeting I went to, yes, they had the resolution already drawn up and all of them, I didn't, as far as making the resolution, no. If that's the question.
No, no, I understand what you're saying.
But no, as far as reading it and being there when they were discussing it, the one that was going on in the municipalities, yes, I wasn't attended.
Mayor, was this decision voted upon by the mayor's meeting?
Say it again.
The decision to make this resolution, was it voted upon by the mayor's meeting?
Yes, all the mayors, yes, that's how it got to different municipalities because the mayors agreed to, you know, have the opinion of all municipalities.
I'm sorry, I think I think that might, and I, I don't have any options about that, but I think that might be a charming or encouraged request.
It's a resolution. Everyone has access to it. If someone wants to read it aloud, that's within the purview of the council president. And whether or not he wants to deviate from the normal protocol and allow it to be read into the record versus us reading it silently, doesn't make a difference. Well, she wants it read into the record. That's the request. Council president makes it to city.
Can I read? This is City of Pleasantville Resolution Number 602023. A resolution urging the Board of County Commissioners for Atlantic County to review the Atlantic County Utilities Authority's, the ACUA operations, the efforts taken by the ACUA to reduce costs, and to the ACUA's effort to address long-term solid waste disposals for Atlantic County. Whereas in 1969, Atlantic County officials recognized the need to provide comprehensive wastewater management, took them a long time, in Atlantic County, and adopted the formation of the Atlantic County Silver Ridge Authority, the ACSA. And whereas in June 1981, the Atlantic County Board of County Commissioners, formerly known as the Board of Chosen Freeholders, designated the ACSA as the agency to implement the Atlantic County Solid Waste Management Plan, and decided to change the name of the ACSA to the Atlantic County Utilities Authority, the ACUA. And whereas over the last few years, the Atlantic County Mayor's Association, the ACMA, has been reading and following the concerns regarding the ACUA's landfill capacity issues and the need to develop a long-term plan for solid waste disposal. And whereas the ACMA recognizes that this is a critical issue that will affect all of the municipalities in Atlantic County. And whereas the ACMA is also aware that the ACUA's rate for solid waste disposals are increasing by 11% in 2023, and wastewater rates are increasing by 8% in 2023. And whereas a significant increase in rates by the ACUA will hamper efforts to reduce costs for the residents and businesses in Atlantic County. And whereas the ACMA recognizes that the Board of Trustees of the ACUA historically has done an excellent job running the authority for many years. And whereas unfortunately, over the last couple of years, it has been widely reported that there are disagreements between the ACUA and various municipalities over issues regarding trash collection, increasing risk of solid waste and water waste, and the lack of a feasible plan to deal with solid waste disposal into the future. And whereas the potential impacts of municipalities and the Atlantic County, of Atlantic County are issues that the ACMA believes deserve more involvement and oversight to ensure that future decisions are made with the best interest of the residents and business of Atlantic County in mind. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City of Pleasantville supports Atlantic County Mayor's Association's request for the involvement of the Atlantic County Board of Commissioners because the elected representatives of Atlantic County will provide the transparency that is required of these efforts. And let it be further resolved, the Atlantic County Mayor's Association believes that this involvement should include a full review of the ACUA's operations and efforts taken to reduce costs at the ACUA, and the efforts underway to address long-term solid waste disposal for Atlantic County, dated March 20th, 2023.
Mayor, a question for you. A couple of years back, I got a chance to go have Mr. Christen, he was council at the time, and got one early morning, we drove over to ACUA, and that is the Delilah Road location. And Delilah Road location, I think it's two or three mountains of trash that you can see deep into the land ocean. I know we've had, had a conversation about transfer station, trash and all this, but the mountain of trash happens to be a garbage township. Borderline, a big airport, a garbage township, a garbage township. And when you get to the top of that mountain of that trash, you can see deep into Atlantic Ocean. I know they were running out of space and all this, some other things that was, they were talking about, that was going on. Did they have an active plan to move that trash that's breathing in, over Pleasantville? Some type of way of moving that trash, because I know it has runoff, and runoff has a radius, and that radius would hit, obviously hit Pleasantville. And it's far from being a so-called dump that we've been talking about lately. It's that, it's those mountains of trash. So, they went, to me, when that entity is gassing various people up in the community and everything, they really don't care about it at all because you have three mountains of trash really breathing on Pleasantville. Combustible trash, not construction, combustible trash. And I know that they come up in.
Well, what they did, they built, they're building it up. They built this wall so that they could have more trash. And they're predicting that in six years, they won't have anywhere else to put it.
Right. They're running out of space over there. There's so much trash over there, they're running out of space.
But yes, they, that part of the country does have.
That's breathing on Pleasantville.
That is a true dump.
That is the true dump. That's breathing on Pleasantville.
I do have something to add to that. With that being said, you know, that is outside of the city, and it's not in the middle of Pleasantville, which is right in the heart of shopping center and other different places that are close to where I grew up and where I live at. So, you know, I just don't know what the commissioners are going to do because I went out to their meeting and they were okay with that trash being brought into City of Pleasantville. So, me myself, as a resident, as someone who grew up here and grew up when there was a dump right up the street from where I lived at, that is not something that I think I can trust with the county commissioners to make a decision for me. I watched them say, yes, and put it in Pleasantville, you know, a year ago. So, honestly, for them to have the authority to have my welfare, my welfare at heart, I just don't see it ran the commission, so, you know, the commissioners, I just don't see it. It's wise with this resolution itself. Yes.
With that being said, from my understanding, that if the transfer station was to come here, it will raise our cost as well. So, what can the commissioners do for us to try to, you know, maybe reverse the vote? Or say, you know, do you all really want it? They didn't come here in our defense to say, don't, you know, don't bring this dump slash transfer station here to Pleasantville. They didn't have our best interest, like Councilman Dabram poor said. So, even, so, even with this transfer station coming here, I'm afraid to go on and go.
I don't see how you all would turn this into a transfer station. That has nothing to do with this that we're talking about.
Oh, because, I mean, deep down inside, I believe that this has something to do with the transfer station. And my last question is, Mayor, are you still on a board of ACUA?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Excuse me, I just want you to understand that I wasn't making it about the transfer station. I was making it about the commissioners' decision-making. And when I saw them make that decision, that kind of muddied the water for me when it comes to them making a decision for the City of Pleasantville. So, that's why I'm saying if you're going to give this, as far as the ACUA, to the commissioners to make a decision on, that's kind of, I just don't, I don't trust that process. That's where, that's why I was putting that here.
Any more, any more questions?
Next, we can read the documents.
Good evening. First of all, we talked about the bill between the S council meeting and S council meeting. Some minor ones, you'll see on page one, South State Gas, we were putting the bill together at S council meeting so we can get a chance to, you know, mount it to a do. And then near the bottom wire, transfers, you'll see the payroll of $1,055,000, they have payroll. Got people, some of the people that were looking to have retired, I believe there were three policemen and two firefighters that were retired during the last time here. You look at bills to be paid, halfway down on page one, out of deck, out of tech, rather. These are software used by the police department for scheduling. And you'll see a couple of filters that have to do with software that we renew on an annual basis, usually about this time of the year. You'll see down the big names, ACUA, a couple down, there's their traction removal for the month of February. If we go over to page two, police works way down, there's the CME associates. These are payments for their engineering services for, as you'll notice, everything from Tunis Avenue to some Dally Road stuff, some Decatur Avenue, Lake Bay Maintenance dredging, and the review of the bridge for Route 40 for the train station. This is, nobody pays these on a recorded basis, and they're all coming out of the operation for sewer capital and general capital. We go to page three, third one down. Admin GovTech, that is our software that we use in the finance office to pay bills, and all the rate checks. As I mentioned, we have a number of software things that were on the list. On page four, halfway down is the MuroDex. Again, this is software used in the clerk's office for working the license and the puppy dogs. MuroDex. On page five, you see the third one down is Board of Education, the monthly payment for our school. Next one down for Phoenix. Again, this is software and maintenance software for police station. Five down below that, you see South State Inc., that is second draw on Decatur Avenue. We probably have like 600,000 dollars left of the contract to be paid. And that is all the bills that are unusual natured, and I'll be rest in order for operations of the city.
Mr. Lee, can you explain on page two for CMB associates, the Lake Bay maintenance dredging? I know it's going to be $4,000 square, 4,000 square thousand. What does that include and what does it mean?
That we had to do, we asked them to do some preliminary work for preparing things for Green Acres and Army Corps of Engineers grant, as well as giving, making sure, making sure that the price that we were kind of giving up ballpark was a reasonable number. So, they reviewed their numbers. Others will eventually go, did, but they were putting out some things for the Army Corps of Engineers, for engineering work also.
And did you say it was for our Green Acres or for?
No, for, for our, our stuff. For Joker and Marita. It has nothing to do with, there are engineers.
Thank you.
Mr. Lee, on the first page for property attorney, it says share court, $5,000.
They're, they're consulting attorney. We're dealing with, as we've talked about, the possibility of sharing court with Atlantic City. There's some legal work that has to be involved in that. We're still in the process of negotiating back and forth with the numbers. But as an attorney, they're talking to Atlantic City attorney and our attorney, so there's a cost involved.
For the Admins GovTech? It says financial software.
That's a financial.
Is that a renewal as well?
Financial.
Is that a renewal?
Oh, yes. We've had Admins probably for long, if I remember, long before I was here. And it's for the collection, bill collection, past collection, about sewer collection. And so, we, all our financial hardware.
Yes. Sorry, sorry. I read the entire report. There's also a little thing that we do elaborate, the online employee scheduling. What is that? Online employee scheduling?
Used for the police department.
Oh.
That is their, their way to keep track of where everybody is and, uh, stick time, vacation time, and that type of thing.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Tim Jones, Pleasantville. Just reflecting on the comments that were just made, I would like to share some concerns about the Resolution Number 60. I would like to share, as we spoke, I just got on my phone here and looked something up. Janet Portino, one of the commissioners, he's also the safety compliance supervisor at Gold Medal Environmental. Should the ACUA? Should the ACUA get shut down, and I'm not, I'm not yet able to get it for the ACUA. That's a whole nother can of worms that I have nothing to do with. My concern is Pleasantville. If they shut it down there, they will bring that here. That gentleman, Mr. Dean Attali, he's setting the stage to bring all the type of activities that will be done at the ACUA right to this location in Pleasantville. And this gentleman, James Portino, he's one of the commissioners. And for Gold Medal, Gold Medal would be one of the contractors that would be hauling trash from all over. They already have the contract for Atlantic City. And they would be perhaps bringing, well, bringing trash into Pleasantville, into our facility on our Washington Avenue. Don't tell me there's not a conflict between the commissioners and the ACUA. It's bull, and I'm not trying to hear. The second thing I, I'd like to raise is this, I, I did this this afternoon. As you see in this illustration here, and I, I have plenty of confidence to share with you, this is the proposed fifty-three point six, fifty-three thousand, six, fifty-three thousand, six hundred square foot facility that Mr. Dean Attali is proposing at the, um, Washington Avenue site. This is the current transfer station size that's right there on, at the ACUA on, um, Delala Road. This is where they do the recycling at the ACUA. So you, you mean to tell me, according to all the things that I've seen that is proposed, he's going to do all the activities of these second two blocks and this smaller first block? Give me a break. We can't set ourselves up for this type of thing, everybody. We can't set ourselves up as a city for this better. These people, these commissioners and whoever else, they have vested interests in making money and it's not the vested interests of the people in Pleasantville. We don't want to dump, we don't want any of this type of activity in Pleasantville. There's better ways to make money, there's smarter decisions to be made. And I want to stand in complete opposition to any effort to bring this trans transfer station, resource recovery facility, recycling individual facility, or whatever else Mr. Dean Attali is proposing. He already has the, well, the weed factory, he's looking at an expansion building twice, uh, about approximately the size of that other one. He's making plenty of money in Pleasantville off of weed alone. Do we need to bring trash too? And I ask the clerk that she may share this with the other council people. Thank you.
Uh, good evening, Pleasantville City Council. Um, so I also have some follow-up questions regarding, uh, resolution number sixty. Um, could anyone tell me who is on the Atlantic County Mayor's Association? Is there a list?
All the mayors in Atlantic County?
All the mayors.
Yeah.
And no one else? No ex officio?
Excuse me?
No, they're like ex officio members. It's just the mayors?
It's just the mayors. Well, I mean, it's the, of course, the, um, the executive and all that, but yeah, all the mayors.
And, uh, when was your last meeting with Atlantic County Mayor's Association?
They meet monthly.
They meet monthly, so the last meeting was last month?
Mm-hmm.
And is someone from Pleasantville, uh, on this association as a voting member?
All mayors, not, not.
So you would be a voting member, okay. So Mayor, from the information that you provided, I just want to clarify on whether you were there for this discussion regarding the resolution that was brought up tonight?
I was there for the February discussion, yes.
Okay, so you had input on wording and how this raised?
No, no, they, they had resolution, they presented and they, uh, supposed to take it to our municipalities, they, they supported.
Okay, and just to clarify, who is they? Who exactly wrote, like, this resolution?
Like the solicitor, the Mayor's Association.
And who's the solicitor?
At that time, it was Rebecca, but at this, um.
And the last name, I'm sorry, Rebecca?
Rebecca, um, Rebecca, she was.
Rebecca Lafferty, okay. And, um, who heads this Mayor's Association?
It's an Atlantic County Association, all the mayors.
No, no, but is there a specific, like, president, chair, board president?
Well, yes, the chair is, um, uh, uh, Mayor Gordon.
Mayor Gordon?
Mayor Gordon from F C.
From F C, yeah, okay, great. And, um, so are those meetings open to the public?
No.
Okay, so I'm assuming there's like no meeting minutes to those, uh, discussions that were had, no?
This is the Mayor's Association.
So they're not, they're not?
And anything that they have that's often for the municipalities, they submit to the mayors to take to their municipalities.
But I would just like.
Up or down?
So I would just like to clarify, so the, the meeting minutes or whatever happens, it's not open to the sunshine, right?
It sounds like it's a voluntary association, as our several professional organizations comprise the key to certain leadership decisions.
Okay, and so I know that this has brought, been brought up to multiple cities. What other cities or municipalities are exactly voting on this similar resolution this month?
I can't name them. All I can speak for is Pleasantville. They will all give them the information.
Okay, so you don't know of any other cities that are?
I didn't ask about any other cities. I, I, like I said, I voted to Pleasantville because that's my city. I'm sure all the other mayors took to their cities.
No, I just want to know, I just want to be fully transparent on exactly who's authoring such resolutions and why the Pleasantville City Council, with their sort of, um, independent, they're an independent body from this Mayor's Association. So I'm just trying to figure out why this resolution is being pushed tonight at the city council level? When there's really no, I mean, it's not being forced upon us, is it? I would say it's not, no one's forcing us to, to bring this resolution tonight, right? It's voluntary, it's completely voluntary?
Yes, this is legal. Well, you write the resolution, this is just for them to do a study on that, you realize that, right?
Okay, yeah. And so then my follow-up question is, has anyone contacted the ACUA with questions related to resolution sixty? Has anyone?
I have no idea. I have no idea, but I'm very, very sure that ACUA is aware of it. I know for a fact they are, because Rick Dobby was at our last meeting.
At which meeting?
Our last Mayor's Association meeting.
Okay, and were you able to talk to him about some of the resolutions?
I think, look, this, no, no, I wasn't.
Okay, all right, all right, thank you so much. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Council President, it's listening, clerk, everyone, how's everybody doing today? Have a question in reference to ordinance number three. Um, it speaks in reference to, under the explanation, amending existence ordinance to establish a cannabis site plan waiver committee? Who was the committee mayor? That's the question. Who's the committee, who are the committee members?
It was Andy Gordon, so I can get to it. Chair.
Yes, yes, yes.
Council President, your construction official, your planning and zoning, uh, professionals, the, uh, business manager, and then, I'm not sure that I'm not even, I, 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 fire official.
Planning?
Yes, and planning and zoning.
Yep.
Plan, zoning, construction, um, engineer, engineer, all of your, your city? And I'll just, I'll, I'll state it as listed on the other document. The city council president, your city engineer, your construction pole official, your zoning official, your fire official, and your city manager.
Next question, the reference to the same ordinance, um, speaks in reference to that last sentence. Shall provide specific air treatment system. Now, the question I have on that, the reference to specific air treatment system, I guess there's going to be two parts to that. What is the system if you can't answer it? And if not, does this system have anything to do with an existing cannabis business? As we know, there is one right now. The reason I'm asking that is because when you ride by there, you smell marijuana, weed, marijuana cough, and it's, it's strong.
Mm-hmm.
I'm of the understanding that it's something dealing with the, um, ventilating system in reference to a filter that will knock that smell down. And the reason I'm asking that also again is because it says here, shall provide specific air treatment systems. So I, I guess that's for, uh, a new development that's coming into play. This is something that they must have in place in reference to the air. So going back again, whether it's in existence is, well, does this apply to an old building that's in existence already also? So again, two-fold, what is the filter? And does this apply to existing, uh, cannabis location? Because of, would you smell coming out of the place? Let me ride by it.
Yes, so.
Air is not too much.
No, no, I, I think it's a great answer because those are the things that we studied when the ordinance was being amended. Uh, am I going to explain to you that system?
No, not really, just, yeah, if you want to explain it, explain it.
No, I'm not. Um, but there will be a system and the language there to, uh, uh, for those that are interested in participating in the cannabis business as to what that system should be. So there's going to be a standard and that's what this ordinance does, is, uh, uh, identifying with that standard being. Second, we, yes, we will be going back, looking at any existing businesses to make sure that they meet those standards and we'll be taking the proper steps to make sure they do so.
Okay, um, in reference to the, um, ordinance number sixty, the only question I have, well, I asked a question on it in reference to the explanation. Um, everything that was said in reference to, um, the resolution number sixty is like, I'm looking at this, but I don't see what you guys are talking about. So can we get more meat in the explanation? So when I read this, I can be more averse to what's going on. Because when I read this, I, I didn't see much in relationship to the conversation that I was in with reference to this, uh, resolution number sixty. Because it says it is supporting the Atlantic County Mayor's Association for the board of county commissioners. I didn't know anything about what the council was speaking about in reference to the county, uh, 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 making a, I guess, a decision for Pleasantville, or from what you're saying, we had that it's all the mayors. And if it came back to Pleasantville, which you are representing, um, then does that say, as far as Pleasantville, say, okay, for the study? And if they do get a study and it says whatever the operations are, what it's going to entail, does that in turn now come back to Pleasantville and could it be something that would bite us? That's the only question.
I don't see how to begin with that, but, but they would have to, of course, we wouldn't agree to anything that.
So this is just to do a study?
Yes, this is, yes.
And that study is, if, if it fills up over there, where do we go or is that a study?
Well, I, exactly what it's going to entail, I don't know, but it has to do with the cost and with the services that they're providing to the commissioners to do the stuff.
That's not what's Pleasantville for the cost, right?
I'm sorry?
Pleasantville is not going to add towards that cost?
No, no, it doesn't cost us anything.
Okay, I'm just saying.
It's just a matter of whether or not we agreed to, you know, to participate.
If we don't participate, what happens? It still moves on, it still moves on? Does it still move on if Pleasantville mayors is willing to participate?
I'm sure most of the mayors in the counties say yes, it would.
So it's almost like the casinos when they did it for Atlantic City years ago. Everybody else said, Lexi said no, but everybody else said yes and came to Atlantic City. So it's along the same lines then?
Well, all I know is that we don't study. If we, if we don't do it, then we don't participate. I, that wasn't discussed as far as, but I mean, there is no penalty, I do know that. I mean.
Okay.
Good evening. I'm sorry. Uh, I might, I, I have a question and I might be confused, so maybe you guys can clear it up for me. This thing about, um, ordinance for special emergency appropriations to the two to two point five million dollars for severance packages for, and what I'm hearing is police and fire, but at the last few meetings of being here, y'all have been hiring police and fire and promoting. So are you creating this debt yourself or like, what's happening? That's confusing. Because you're hiring these people, new people. And now you want to get rid of other people and have to give them a severance pay to the two to two point five million dollars like this, it, it don't sound right. Can anybody explain that to me? That makes no sense. Well, how are you hiring the same people that you're replacing?
Right now.
What?
We did get a grant to be able to hire officers that were hired. We got the grant to be able to do that.
Okay, and, and, and hiring?
The, uh, cost, excuse me, and the cost are the insurance costs that we didn't anticipate. That is what part of our debt is. The insurance cost that was thrust upon us this year, the health and, health insurance. And that is part of the debt. And then as far as hiring, we had, um, the grants. We were awarded grants to be able to hire the police department.
But y'all didn't know that y'all had, they had, they had insurance, like they?
Well, no, it's not that we didn't have it. We were already working on the budget when we got the, um, when we got the word from the state that the insurance costs were going up. And this isn't just Pleasantville with this insurance issue. This is everywhere. This is across, this is across the state everywhere where they own this insurance, insurancy, health insurance agreement.
Okay, but what would have happened if you kept the people that you talked about laying off and not hired the new people? Would the insurance still have gone up?
The insurance is going to go up no matter what. That's, we don't have anything to do with that at all. We have nothing to do with that and then, you know, we, we, we didn't say retiring because we did have a lot of officers and police. Retired, fire, and police that retired.
Yeah, let's try to, so I think we're mixing apples and oranges a little bit. So the, the folks that you're seeing that are being hired, they're hired under a grant. So that has no impact on, on your budget, right? It's fully covered. Their comp, their compensation package is fully covered under the grant. Through attrition, right, so that's when folks leave, we're able to fill those spots. And what, what has happened and what has been the history here in Pleasantville, uh, for years, we typically hire a group of folks and then they come up through retirement and end up leaving at the same time. So now what we're experiencing is, uh, you know, a group of folks, both in our, uh, fire and, uh, police department that are retiring at the same time, because they got hired at the same time, right? And those folks have what they call terminal leave or severance packages. The severance package monies are usually, you, that's in your surplus budget, but because we don't have a surplus budget, well, we have it, but it's very tight. So we don't have enough money there for when it's time to retirement. So the, the folks for the grant has nothing to do with the severance, the bond that you see here today. These are the folks that, uh, eight or nine folks that started twenty-five years ago that have severance packages that total about two, two million dollars, right? That typically, from year to year, you put money aside in your surplus money so that as they retire, that money is sitting there. We've been using the city of Pleasantville's surplus money to help offset our budget. Uh, so these people are still retiring, their sti, money is still, you know, they're still owed their retirement package. In order to make sure that we pay them out correctly, we take out what we call, is this bond. It's a bond, and I think it was explained by the CFO, that is, um, you pay it over a five-year period and it doesn't have any implication as it relates to, um, is, is a, is a special bond, so it doesn't go into your, your, your two and a half percent cap, right? It doesn't go into your two and a half percent cap, so it doesn't have an impact in the budget that way. So there are ways that the state allows municipalities. This is not something that's unheard of. This is, uh, something that the state allows municipalities to do when you have to, uh, pay out what they call, uh, special emergencies. And this is considered a special emergency when you have this, uh, number of people retiring at the same time that's due large sums of money at the same time. So the retirement doesn't have anything to do with, uh, the new hires. The new hires are coming in and we're, we haven't created new spots for those new people. They're actually coming in, taking vacancies that were not filled. So you, you're not, you're not bringing additional people or you're filling, uh, public safety spots that had not been filled. I hope that helped you a little bit.
It did help me a little bit, but you know, there's a lot of work I think about, and, but. And I have one other thing that I just want to say about the, um, ACUA and, um, Mr. Siswa, I'm saying that that's the real dump that's breathing on Pleasantville, blah, 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 blah. So have, have they considered, um, like, you know how they want to bring five hundred trucks a day in here, bringing trash in from other places? Have they considered trucking that out to a place that already has an incinerator so that we don't have to have it? I mean, it's a solution.
Good evening, everyone. I just have a question. The grant that you got for the police and fire, how long is that grant for?
So the grant that we're, we're talking about police grant, not fire.
Okay.
The police grant, is it three years? Three years, I'm getting three years from, oh, from the CFO and the two.
Okay, so after the three years, then who pays their salary?
We do, and this is why we have to bring radials in so that, um, we can sustain ourselves.
And I'm with you on that, bringing in radials. But I'm also wanting to know, if we bring radials in, if we can't keep on giving people all these, um, abatements and all this, because we need money in Pleasantville. Apparently, we don't have any money.
Public program.
And so the power program, it's not bringing us any money. So where do you see we'll be in the next ten years if we don't have any money?
Or, or radibles.
Or radibles.
Same board number, maybe?
Trash from the paper was dropping soon.
That's the thing, you know, that's the thought that I had while I was sitting here listening to, you know, what was being said. So we have to get something that's going to bring radibles in so that our city won't keep being in the red. And bringing a lot of housing and stuff like that, that's not bringing in the radibles that we need now. We need to bring in some things, a big mall or something like that, so we can get some radibles. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I see a lot of people.
My name is Captain Neem Speight. I live in Linwood in Atlantic County. I signed in tonight and I said my name so you all can hear me, because I thought that was part of the public process, is to everyone to say their name. I come here tonight to talk about the resolution that you want to pass. I'm making comments. Um, according to the rules, we're not supposed to have a discussion with the council unless the council decides to answer me. But I'm not asking questions tonight, I'm making comments. Specifically, I feel that this resolution number sixty is a way and a means for the Atlantic County Mayor's Association, and unfortunately, your mayor, to go after the Atlantic County Utilities Authority. And it's being used as retaliation. And I think that is wrong. Your mayor is a member of the Atlantic County Utilities Authority. She was present at their meeting in December when these rates were discussed. And just as your mayor said, unfortunately, insurance rates have gone up for your employees and your retired employees twenty-one point five percent. Nobody expected that. They didn't expect it in Linwood, they didn't expect it in Pleasantville, they didn't expect it at the ACUA. Somehow, everyone needs to come up with that money. And I understand, right at this point, my mayor is probably going to be discussing how we're going to come up with that at our next meeting tomorrow night. But no, he has not. His name is Darren Matic. He has not brought up this resolution as of yet. Um, I was at the meetings, public meetings that were held in December fifteenth, that the ACUA discussed why they were looking at an eight percent and an eleven percent increase in the rates. I was the only person in the public who spoke. And if you would go on their website, you will see the minutes. And I asked specifically what ACUA was going to do to help communities, all communities, but especially unfortunately, communities that have an economic impact like Pleasantville and what was going to be done. At that time, uh, that question was addressed and answered by President, uh, Rick Dovey. Um, I did not hear your mayor, as a member of that board, ask any questions. And then in January, when it was discussed and the budget for two thousand and twenty-three was approved by ACUA, there are no comments at all from the public or from your mayor as well. So that's why I don't understand this resolution tonight and why it's being brought forth. Um, there was a meeting that was held with your business administrator on December eleventh. Uh, he was the only one present with ACUA. And the costs that were associated with ACUA were brought to the attention of Pleasantville to explain the eight percent and the eleven percent. Your mayor wasn't there, none of your council members were there. So I think this has been out there, but no one has been listening. And unfortunately, now you have to figure out a way to understand the rate increases and you're having a hard time absorbing it. I thank you for your time.
Anyone else from the public? Second? Oh, favor?
Hi.
Now, yeah. Discussion. That's going to be done.
Brother.
Mayor.
Nothing at this time.
Pretty different here, and everybody comes in and they can say that we, we should have radibles and radibles to come in here and then sort the smaller group that, you know, basically, uh, most of council meetings last year really has been against every radical we try to bring.
Those weren't radibles.
Sure. Those were, those were.
Those weren't radibles.
Bang yourself too, you on time limit too.
I have, I listen to you.
Yeah, we're not your kids. We take, we, we looking for respect from you, Council President.
I got, I got your respect, I got your respect.
All right, I got your respect too, sir.
You're gonna give mine, because I gave yours.
All right, just make sure you remember that, don't disrespect us, we're not your children.
You're gonna give.
We're citizens, we paying you, because remember, you're a paid member.
Thank you.
You, you're more than. Don't forget that. Not here to be verbally abused by you.
Excuse me, everybody, he let everybody speak.
That's all right.
Do this, all right?
Just. Just don't verbally abuse, abuse us.
But let him have his peace.
He got his peace.
He had yours, let him have.
Say your peace, sir. Just don't abuse us.
Let's see, apparently, see, probably twenty, twenty years, something like that. And then you can, and I forget the project that we had. We got so made up, like, we can drive around and say, and I forget what we done. Council, uh, Councilwoman was, uh, Council President. Um, this past couple of years, I've been having to move these projects. So now, here we are, right? You, you heard the CFO talk about laying off police officers, furlough days, freezes. Then we come back and you talk about, uh, uh, what it would mean to just bind things all the way out. So you would just take, take the tax base and increase it because you're just increasing it with debt. Then we have projects. We have projects that we can move that will help the city of Pleasantville. Those projects that will help the city of Pleasantville keeps consistent all those times that I was here before with the other council people that we had here. See, if we sit here and we do nothing, it's going bankrupt. So what is it? You want the radibles? Sometimes you can't get the best deal in the whole wide world. You just can't do it. We ain't even positioned to get the best deal in the whole wide world. It'll definitely be one of the worst school districts. So we can't, we cannot get the best deals in the whole wide world. Don't even buy it. It's, it's hard for a person to buy a house here with the tax rates being as, as high as it is.
No kidding?
So now you, you, so, so you got this, um, you, it, it's not really not a chicken and egg scenario because every municipality has to bring business to municipalities. You guys have been champion of cause against yourselves, it's like fighting against yourself.
Can I say something?
Say it.
I gotta say something, just though. First of all, the concessionaire agreement is not a ratable. A concessionaire agreement is giving away an asset that we own that produces revenue. Lake Spey is not a revenue. It is a pilot program with a fixed amount of rate that we have no idea what else it's going to bring into town. If you're talking about other projects that have been done in this city, most of them have been done by a pilot program that has not been, have been brought in by bringing in radibles into this city. We have very few radibles. The majority of the taxes paid in this city are paid by property owners. Not radibles through businesses. And if you think that bringing in and bringing back the concessionaire agreement is a good idea to offset the two point five million dollars that the CFO and the business administrator has recommended to us so that we don't lay off our employees, then go ahead, make the resolution to bring back the concessionaire agreement.
So says the lady that doesn't want the water, she says.
That's exactly right. It's not a ratable.
Not as a giveaway.
It's three hundred thousand dollars.
Entertaining a motion to adjourn.
Yes, good.
Motion to adjourn.
This is just the word, sir.
Basically, you still got to adjourn, sir. It's motion to adjourn.
Second.
Good evening, this is City of Pleasantville, City Council, regular meeting. The day is, day is twenty, uh, March the twentieth, twenty, twenty-three. The time is, uh, it's eight, eight oh three, eight oh three, yeah. Um, this, this meeting has been de-iaed, advertised in the city's news, based on the forums with open public feedback, uh, by as long as the sunshine law. Could you please stand for implication? Thanks. My father. My kingdom come, that will be done, honored as it is in heaven. Give us today our daily bread and forgive us our trespasses, as we believe there will soon be justice against us. Believe it is not in just temptation, but the will of the people, of our kingdom, our Lord, forever. By the ways, just to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, limited in its form. Roll call.
Davenport.
Present.
Favelaro.
Here.
Thomas.
Present.
Camona.
Present.
Korea. Barclay.
Present.
Sistro.
Present.
Sixty-eight.
Let's take a motion to, 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 to.
Second.
All the things?
Um.
Okay, you did, kind of bases of propositions. Um, third.
First on the, uh, then this ordinance number two, second reading, public hearing will be held. Amendment, chapter one sixteen and chapter three hundred of the city code regulating the operations of cannabis businesses within the city.
Any questions? I don't know, it's just a second reading, anyone from the public to speak for against this, uh, ordinance? Say anyone? Motion close. Thank you. On favor?
Uh, you.
Roll call.
Need a motion for?
Say the motion is roll call.
Function.
Second.
Roll call, Davenport.
Yes.
Favelaro.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Camona.
Yes.
Barclay.
Yes.
Sistro.
Yes.
Ordinance adopted. Ordinance number three, second reading, public hearing will be held. Amendment, chapter three hundred of the city code regulating the operation of cannabis businesses within the city.
Motion.
Um, Mr. Public.
Oh, that's a question.
Anyone from the public who wants to speak on this? On?
Sweet ring.
On what?
This is public hearing.
What's the?
The Jinga.
Motion close.
Motion close, both portion?
Motion.
Second. On favor?
Hi.
Say the motion. Say the motion. Second.
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
Okay, roll call.
Okay, we made a motion for roll call. Roll call, Davenport.
Yes.
Favelaro.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Camona.
Yes.
Barclay.
Yes.
Sistro.
Yes.
Ordinance adopted. Ordinance number four, first reading, authorizing a special emergency appropriation pursuant to NJSA forty colon four dash fifty-three for the purpose of funding severance liabilities due under assisting authority contracts and authorizing the issuance of special emergency notes to fund the sale.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, Davenport.
Yes.
Favelaro.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Camona.
Yes.
Barclay.
Yes.
Sistro.
Yes.
Ordinance has been moved to second reading, scheduled for April the third. Resolution fifty-seven, authorizing assignment of municipal lien certificate to Swan Superior Properties LLC.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, Davenport.
Yes.
Favelaro.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Camona.
Yes.
Barclay.
Yes.
Sistro.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution fifty-eight, authorizing a tax collector to refund taxes on certain properties.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, Davenport.
Yes.
Bar, Favelaro.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Camona.
Yes.
Barclay.
Yes.
Sistro.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution fifty-nine is to cancel tax, our certificate number twenty-two dash zero zero four five eight for block three seventy, lot fourteen.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, Davenport.
Yes.
Favelaro.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Camona.
Yes.
Barclay.
Yes.
Sistro.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution seventy, I'm sorry, sixty, urging the Board of County Commissioners for Atlantic County to review the ACUA operations, the efforts taken by the ACUA to reduce costs and the ACUA's efforts to address long-term solid waste disposal for Atlantic County.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, Davenport.
No.
Favelaro.
No.
Thomas.
No.
Camona.
No.
Barclay.
Yes.
Sistro.
Yep.
Resolution is not. Next, I need a motion to approve the bill, please.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, Davenport.
Yes.
Favelaro.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Camona.
Yes.
Barclay.
Yes.
Sistro. Motion approved. Next, I need a motion to approve bingo and rental license.
Motion. Second.
Roll call, Davenport.
Yes.
Favelaro.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Camona.
Yes.
Barclay.
Yes.
Sistro. Motion approved. Next is public motion.
Next is public motion, anyone from the public who's.
Somebody took.
So when they're kicking the.
No, I. I'm sorry, I don't think so.
That means you all don't need to speak.
Thank you for your time. Thank you for your time, so I know you grabbed a lot of paper.
Twitch is got flussy like a peacock.
Good evening again, everybody. Um, uh, there's been some discussion this evening with regards to, um, revenues for the city. I, I, we've done some requests as of late, of people in the community. And we've come to the understanding that, oh, since two thousand thirteen to two thousand twenty-two, all of the power programs combined have brought to the city two point one million dollars. That's roughly equivalent to the amount that this city receives from three hundred and fifty households in one single year. And we're talking almost a thousand household units. This is why it's just, it's not bad, it's not good business for the city. What we have, we have, and the, the vapor property, it doesn't even meet the standard of, of a low and moderate income. We're not meeting the needs of poor people, oh, excuse me, we're not meeting the needs of poor people or people who need housing when we give pilot programs. We talk about the pilot program, um, when Mr. Janetti said, well, always we do this if we give them a thirty-year pilot program. As I understand it, they, they live and express it here down in twenty-two. Look how many millions of dollars we gained just by saying no to it and, and on the, on the inside. We need to stand up and be negotiators. We just can't be bending over and just taking whatever people want to pitch to us. That's the fucking old problem I see just going in this city. Preface, thank you for bringing up resolution of sixty-five and reading it, Councilwoman Favelaro. And congratulations, uh, Councilman, um, Camer, um, Camona for being selected for the candidate for the state senate seat. Second issue that I'd like to raise is, I come to discover a couple of weeks ago that there was a meeting between James Theotally, who was the person who wants to put this dump, I'll call it a dump now, because fundamentally, that's what it is with all these other uses, in the heart of Pleasantville. And it was held up in Atlantic City by the Fellowship of Churches, hosted by our gentleman, um, Congressman, Councilman James Barkley here, along with Jesse Tweedle. What's that about? Why is a Planted Word member, Councilmember, having meetings over in Atlantic City representing the interest of a person who's trying to be a dump to Pleasantville and nobody hardly knows about it? That's unacceptable. Answer it as you wish. Thank you.
Okay, I'll wait.
I'm sorry. Um, I just, what you're, what you're coming up on?
Um, I just, what you, what you coming up on?
Uh, it's okay.
Did you call somebody's name?
I did, we're coming.
I can, I can wait.
No, go ahead, you're related.
It's, it's quite all right, you go right ahead, just tell us your name, I'd love to hear your name.
My name is Relaid Brown.
Thank you, darling.
I would, those who turn.
Thank you, darling.
I, I guess I neglect to say it because everybody knows.
I didn't know it, so thank you.
I just want to say this. From what I understand, doing the same thing over and over again expecting a different result is the definition of insanity. And you're up here, let's do another program, let's do another program, let's do another program, you're not getting what you should be getting from the ones you have. All this time they've been here, where's the ratables that they bought it? They not here, I don't see them. So you gotta do something different. You gotta put your heads together.
You gotta read.
And come up with something that will get ratables in here. Or ask the public for suggestions and we can give you something to knock around. You can't keep doing the same thing and this, and get the same result. You're gonna tax us right out of our homes. That's what you're gonna do. You ought to raise our taxes again. Like I said, from the first time I walked in here, taxes go up, values going down. You already got us trapped. Come up with something that may possibly benefit us better than these pilot programs and bringing in incinerators to kill everybody. Come up with something. You been on this, how long you been on council?
Two or three.
Better by it. Can't you think of nothing original? Because when I talk about this stuff, y'all say, oh, well, this stuff started in the eighties. It's really, we weren't here, it has nothing to do with us, blah, 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 blah. But game changing nothing. You're doing the same thing they did. Just giving, giving it away, giving the whole story away. You need, you need to do that.
Um, it's okay, I'm gonna, you can scratch my name here. Thank you very much. I didn't realize that was the sign and chief.
Okay, Urban Moreno.
Uh, good evening, Pleasantville City Council, Urban Moreno Rodriguez, Pleasantville, New Jersey. City Council President, you know, I really don't want this to turn into like a shouting match or anything, but you're complaining about a trash dump in a Harvard Township outside of our city limits, but you're okay with bringing a trash transfer site to the city? And you believe, and you, and you're okay, you believe that you're going against the studies, all the studies out there.
I'll explain to you, I explained to you quite a few times.
That's great, but I'm explaining, let me have my piece. Because I'm explaining to you all of the toxic emissions that are gonna come from an incinerator and a trash transfer report.
Not that, that incinerator.
Well.
Was that all the discussion?
Well, I'm letting you know, and I think other people have come up here who have that kind of education, particularly the stock, and the M. Stockton student that was here last week, or last city council meeting, to talk about formaldehyde, carbon emissions, nitrous oxide, right? All of these toxins that get, that are gonna flow into this city, right? It's not gonna just be the smelly sulfur that we, we smell from the ACUA. It's gonna be toxins that are gonna impact the well-being of everybody here in Pleasantville. And if you think there's enough money in the world to hurt our people, that's on you. But you're inviting something much worse into this city, and I'm letting you know that.
Ms. Archie.
Dale Archie.
Thank you, thank you. Well, you supposed to think it's naked, you're on there, and I haven't noticed, thank you.
Um, sir, that's for, that's for, um, council and for the mayor. Uh, Mr. Jones spoke on the, the power program as far as dollars that we receive. I was in touch with Mr. Barry, and my facelet is on also as far as what I requested also from the city here. And what you about to get is the figures for ten years, as Mr. Jones stated, total, um, it came up to two million, one hundred, um, two million, one hundred seventy thousand, one hundred eighty-five dollars. Ten years, pilot program. So if that makes good sense and good math, then I guess you'll tell me one plus one isn't two anymore. Um, if you do, Joe is done, you will get, Joe is got. The question I have asked, uh, Mr. Janetti, and I asked up Barry also, um, if we didn't do the pilot program, how much would we have been receiving from these programs? Um, that was almost like, it's generic, that's like the board on the bridge, so it's the question that I really couldn't get a concrete answer from. For an example, you have the building over here by Dunkin' Donuts, the senior citizen high rise, not within senior citizens, but for the reading that I've done for that building, um, the developer, let me back up, the rent, the renters, what they paying in rent, the city in front of you gets tax dollars from that. So if you're, uh, giving, um, assistance from the government, it rents twenty-five dollars. So the city gets tax dollars from that twenty-five dollars. But the developer still gets that twenty-five dollars plus whatever the state is to give him, also what the people couldn't afford to pay. So when you talk about the education, Mr. President, when you talk about things that's gonna generate dollars for the city, and you see what you've been doing isn't giving them the money, this means that you should be reading what's on paper, not you, so excuse me for that, so I'm gonna point nobody out. Every one of the guys, count the whole city, that's in business for the city, for the benefit of the city of Pleasantville, which is a gold mine, Pleasantville is a great city, but you have to come up with things to where you want to bring money in to this city. But if you keep doing the pilot programs, it's not working. Atlantic City right now, if you knew, it was on the news. They, if I'm not mistaken, they're in a position as far as to deal with the pilot program. Because of what? The tax dollars isn't coming in as they see, see fit. So I think they are in the making of getting this deal settled to where they do with the pilot program. So with that being said, the only thing Atlantic City has in common with casinos and Pleasantville here is the one word, tax. They want more money from the taxes. So you would be foolish, when I say I'm not talking to anybody by name, so don't take me that way, what would be foolish not to say, this program isn't working for us, we tried it. It's proof and pudding, it's in black and white. It's time to get off of your seat as far as keep doing the same thing that's not working. Councilmen, man, and everybody else that it applies to whoever's in here that's being paid by the taxpayer as a Pleasantville. You need to come up with a plan, but foremost and first, you have to read the documentation that's coming before you. Do you like to smoke about the sewer deal? You know that wasn't a good deal, but that's just your choice, so that's, that's yours, you can have that, then you have the right to go with that. But when we looked at the long-term effect, it wasn't gonna be beneficial for the city. We understand if you got this dump thing over here, you're gonna call it a transfer station, and you look at what's there already, Tim, the resource what?
Recovery facility.
The recovery facility has a mini coming from the top all the way down to the floor, so it can be a trans, it can be an incinerator. You talking about the chemicals when they wash the ground down with, what, what is that gonna be? Here's the point before you hit that gathering. When was the last time that council has read this stuff, man? You gotta read this stuff. If we bring it to you, I don't know how much time to forgive you, until you bring it up, I gotta say this. I gotta say this. This stuff is in black and white, you have to read this stuff, y'all, because what we bringing to you is what we're reading, you're getting it. I have to do the open public act and get it from the clerk. You guys didn't pick up the phone and get it. Why am I calling and reading stuff to you, you looking at me like I'm speaking something foreign, like I'm laying yard or something? I'm just saying, do your work. I'm not getting paid, do your job, you gotta read this stuff. If you don't read it, you getting screwed. You getting screwed, my man, that's all I'm saying to y'all, you gotta read it, you have to read it. Then come on up, Miss, or whoever, but you gotta read this stuff.
I don't see.
You gotta read this stuff. Y'all killing us financially, you gotta read this stuff. How could you not read this stuff? Come on, y'all, read it.
Public portion.
Say, why ain't read it?
On favor?
Uh.
Come on.
Nelson, one of the times.
You wanna read this stuff?
Now, now we have, uh, vote for council, council. Um, who go mayor? Mayor?
No, nothing this time.
Council, again, congratulations to the new office. God bless you all, thank you for your presence, have a blessed night.
Uh, Councilman Barclay.
I do have something pleasant.
Yes, sir.
Again, over the weekend, our very own Mayor Ward, along with, uh, two other, uh, business committee in the community, rather than Bradley, uh, who's an educator in the city of Atlantic City, and Yolanda Melville, who, uh, was before an associate or partner, actually, with people like this, they were all honored this weekend, uh, by the National Association of the Work, uh, Business and Professional Women's Clubs, so I just want to say congratulations to you there, and make that announcement. Thank you. Carson, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yes, uh, first of all, I want to say congratulations to everybody who got hired and, uh, without, he was retired. Um, the next thing I want to say is I really, I disagree with what this Favelaro said about the concessionaire agreement, just like I disagree with you guys out there. Um, I think we missed the opportunity to move the city forward. Uh, we wouldn't be in a position where we're at right now if we hadn't taken it. Um, but moving forward, that's a done deal, I just had to make myself completely understood on how we felt about that. And I think if it had been looked at a little deeper, it would have been beneficial to the city. Uh, one thing I want to say about the way that we treat each other, you know, someone told us that we can be, we can disagree without being disagreeable, and when you're yelling from the audience, which we're not allowed to yell back at you, you know, that's something that shouldn't happen. So we need to make sure that moving forward, just be respectful, be respectful to each other. We can disagree, yes, we can disagree without being disagreeable and yelling from the audience and making things look less than our profession. So that's all I have to say, thank you, God bless.
Come on. You know, uh, this is a pretty tough job, so, and for myself, I put Pleasantville first. Like putting money where your mouth is, put it first. It's time that I've been up here and done what's best for them, and thought it through and helped negotiate it through and ran it through. Uh, you might not agree with, um, the things that we do up here, or some of the things that you think that you can do better, you know, you get your chance, you probably get your chance, but it's been, it's, it's difficult. So now, uh, you can lay, again, you can lay off employees, lay off cops, uh, lay, lay off firefighters, uh, not, just put the city in jeopardy, put the city in bankruptcy, or we can do what we supposed to do, is we, the seal's back there for a reason. We don't take the seal down, we're supposed to make the best deals we possibly can for the city of Pleasantville. Bring a job, bring an opportunity, bring in work. City Pleasantville got a hundred forty employees, twenty-two thousand residents, so you, we are in business to bring business in, whether some of you like it or not.